Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Mark is not feeling well tonight, so I'm here on his behalf as the vice chairman. And so we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read the roll call.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lainer?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Commissioner Tyson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Here.
Chairman Mark?
If I can, ask everybody to stand for the pledge. Commissioner Lainer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, this board seeks your help with our affairs this evening as we proceed with the people's business. Bless our meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best of our own. While we may be of diverse opinion, we wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory toll. Please share your wisdom with us on this blessed evening so that we may do what is right for the people of Craven County. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, first of all, before we get too far, I want to, I see that Mayor Lewis is here from Havelock. City manager is here. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Any other elected officials here? Billy?
All of them at the back.
Thank you very much.
In the back?
Aldman?
Hold your hand up.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any change?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're going to open up this evening with the public hearing on tall structures. If I could ask the staff to come forward and just explain to us a little bit about what's happening here tonight, and then we'll open up for a public hearing. Thank you.
We do have, the public hearing has been called for tonight's meeting. It was duly advertised. A draft version of the document, the amended document, has been available for public review since the time of advertisement, so the public has had ample opportunity to review the changes that have been made in the ordinance that was, I think, adopted back in 13, I believe, 2013. The changes in the document essentially reflect some additional standards that would, I guess, protect adjoining property owners while also ensuring that the interest, the military interest, in terms of the region as well as the county, are also protected and will not be affected by a proposed project as written into this document. We did not make any overarching changes other than that. If you looked at your packet, the highlighted changes were statutory in nature. The gray highlighting reflects changes that are, that is verbatim direct language, language directly out of the North Carolina general statutes. So those are things that needed to be in the ordinance that were not already in there, so that is just simply an update. That, you know, whether it's written in the ordinance or is not written in the ordinance, those standards will apply if and when someone comes to build a telecommunications tower within the county. So I can answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
And if I can, just for the record, can you state your name and your affiliation?
I am Landon Holland with Holland Consulting Planners, and I am working with the staff.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. Okay, with that, is there a motion to proceed into public hearing? There's a motion? Is there a second?
No.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are in public hearing. Commissioner Lainer?
First member, John Droes. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John Droes. For those who don't know me, I'm an independent scientist and an energy expert. I came from my warm home in Moorhead City on this frigid night to support your good efforts here. I commend the county for proposing a substantial improvement to your existing wind ordinance. You may not be aware of it, but there are some 250 communities in the United States that are dealing with industrial wind energy. One of the more significant things we've learned through these real-world experiences is that it's imperative to properly regulate five key matters. Recently, I wrote up a detailed critique about your proposed new wind ordinance, which explains three, how three of these are now much better than they were before. What still needs to be fixed are two things. A, the fact that there appears to be no meaningful environmental tests here, and B, protection of nearby home values. I'd be delighted to explain the rationale behind any of the five key regulatory areas, but this evening I'm going to use my time to briefly outline eight reasons why B is very significant. Number one, it's essential to understand that a property value guarantee is not a theoretical or academic matter. Numerous studies by independent experts have concluded that the values of homes near industrial wind projects will likely depreciate. For example, the London School of Economics conducted the world's largest study on this matter. This extremely credible and unbiased source examined over a million homes near wind projects. By comparison, the next largest study ever done involved about 10,000. In any case, the London School of Economics study concluded that homes near wind projects will have an average devaluation of 11 percent. Some homes will clearly be devalued more than that. Point number two, wind developers have already gone on record stating that there will not be any property devaluation, so a new issue is not being introduced here. The county should simply have a provision in their ordinance that requires wind developers to stand behind their own public assurances. Note that the suggested property value guarantee regulations were written so that if the wind developers are correct and there is no devaluation, then their cost would be trivial. Number three, ultimately, this is a property rights issue. There are few things more sacrosanct than the property rights of American homeowners. Our entire country came about because our forefathers fought and died for such fundamental rights. Since that time, innumerable United States servicemen and women have given their lives for these precious property rights. I can't imagine that Craven County would ignore the sacrifice of our ancestors. Number four, it's imperative that these primary rights not be dismissed based on unsubstantiated opinions, even if the opinions come from a respected source like the UNC School of Government. If the county has any question about the property value guarantees legality, you need an official legal position on this critical matter. Such a position must be based on specific court rulings and/or state statutes. If property value guarantee opponents cannot produce directly applicable court rulings and/or state statutes, then they have no legitimate legal argument against such a provision being in your ordinance. Number five, as a point of reference, if a property value guarantee is illegal, then why have property value guarantees been passed into law in many other U.S. communities? A good North Carolina example is Carteret County, as their wind ordinance has an excellent property value guarantee. I can assure you that the Carteret County Commissioners carefully examined all sides of the legal argument here and then approved an ordinance with a property value guarantee. You can too. Number six, what should be done if a property value guarantee is deemed to be in a legally gray area? The unequivocal answer is that the county and their attorney should err on the side of defending local homeowners. Since a typical citizen's home is their most valuable possession, these people have a justifiable expectation that their elected representatives will aggressively defend that important asset. Number seven, what about the question of fairness? It's legitimate to ask why this industrial facility is treated differently from commercial operations like a big box store. To answer that, I put together a list of over 20 differences between the two. I gave this list to Commissioner Dacey. Once these are understood, it's clear that a property value guarantee is both reasonable and quite fair. Number eight, it doesn't seem to be at the moment that the county's wind law should have what's called a severability clause. This means that in the highly unlikely scenario that a court rules that any provision in the county's wind ordinance is not enforceable, like the property value guarantee part, then just those words would be negated, and the rest of the local wind ordinance would remain in full force. The bottom line is the property value guarantee is an extremely important and reasonable property rights matter that should be fully and properly included in your wind ordinance. I've been involved with wind energy for a long time, and from what I know, the downsides for including a property value guarantee in your wind ordinance pale in comparison to the benefits. Thank you for your time and good efforts here. Feel free to contact me anytime with any questions on any part of this law.
Thank you very much, Mr. Droes.
Next on the list is Michael Schor. I don't want to ruin it that bad.
Most people just say Mike.
There you go.
That's how you pronounce it. And I'm a Craven County resident in Tuscarora Rims area of Craven County. I heard about this public hearing in a newspaper just a little while ago, and it's my fault that I didn't hear about it sooner because I should have been following what the county commissioners were doing. And hopefully, in the next year, I will do better. I am greatly concerned that the ordinance and especially the changes will preclude our county from getting the benefits, and I mean the benefits, economic and social and other, from development of clean and renewable energy. We can all agree that the need for expanding clean and renewable energy sources and that this is not, should not be a partisan political issue. Now, I came here because I wanted to express my understanding and also my experience with the wind energy. Let me talk about that. My understanding is that the state of North Carolina has an extensive permitting process that establishes, for establishing wind farms. I also understand that the military also has a procedure dealing with structures that affect their installations. I'm sometimes surprised that some people don't trust our military, that they will protect our, their people and defend our nation. I think they will. How many of you have ever been to a wind farm? I've been to the Amazon Wind Farm. Okay. How many of you have been to the Amazon Wind Farm? I've been, and you know, the Amazon Wind Farm is the farm, is the one here in North Carolina. I've been there on a tour, and I talked with the people there. I went into the tower, you know, and saw the electronics and the computers, and then went outside and was standing about 20 feet away, not 20, 200 feet away, all right? And the tour person told me to, told us to stop talking because they had, they had started the veins going, and we had to stop talking so we could hear the whoosh, and we were only 200 feet away. All right. So, you know, the noise was not that much, and certainly further distance it would be a lot less. They, they told me, and they are, they are the largest taxpayer in those counties, all right? They didn't need to, the counties did not need to do any infrastructure roads, didn't have to, you know, repair or make any infrastructure improvements. They did not have to increase the school size, and the landowners got six, are getting $6,000 per wind thing.
Turbine.
Turbine. And while I was there, I could see that the farmers on the land were farming right up to the turbine. So my concern and my suggestion is that we look beyond the Carteret County ordinance, that we don't use that as an example, that we look at other ordinances around the country, you know, right? I think that the Carteret County ordinance was kind of influenced by a self-proclaimed expert, which I am not an expert, who opposes all, pretty much all, efforts to expand clean and renewable energy. I would be glad to be on any committee to review these ordinance or define other experts that can review this ordinance, ordinance. And I thank you for listening to me, and I hope you hear what I am saying.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the list is Richard Friend.
Richard Friend, 3507 Taylor Street, New Bern. I know you gentlemen are familiar with me. Usually, I'm speaking about something else, but, and I wasn't prepared to speak about this. I didn't even know it was on the agenda, and like Michael, that was probably my fault. But I do have an interest in it. I've followed the politics of it in the newspaper, and I know, and you know, that the military has no objection to wind turbines, that they looked at them very carefully, where they were going to be placed, what the issue was, and that they have a procedure in place. If they were going to create a situation that was dangerous to their pilots, you would know about it. They did not object. So the question is, why are you doing this? What is it actually that's driving this change? I spent 12 years of my life living in Palm Desert, California. Within seven miles of that is one of the two largest wind generation facilities in the United States. The San Gregonio Pass, which is the pass between Mount Santa Cinto and Mount San Gregonio, which links the San Joaquin, I mean, the valley in Palm Springs to the Los Angeles Basin, has upwards of 3,000 wind turbines of all varieties. Their biggest problem with those is not, both not landowners, it's with bird attacks. During the time I lived there, I was the emergency communications coordinator for the three cities in the Central Valley. We looked at the problems associated with them many times, and there were no basic problems. The military overflies that areas. They use, practice the 29 Palms Base. Jets fly through there. They never had any difficulty with them. So I think the, using the military as an excuse here is just that, it's an excuse. Anytime I hear somebody speaking who's a self-proclaimed expert on something, makes me question what their background is. Now, the gentleman may be a scientist, but, I mean, I have a doctoral degree, and it's not in science, it's in law, right? I have no expertise on this, but I do have experience. And I looked at this from a law basis, and I said to myself, why are you doing this? Why are you expanding this regulation? What's driving this? If it's a property rights issue, certainly the people who own the land where the wind facility is going to be built, if there is one, have property rights also. So to say others' property rights trump theirs, that's a problem in itself. I mean, I thought we were trying for smaller government, less government, less intrusion. There's an existing, there are, is an existing regulation already concerning these, the, from my standpoint, the sole purpose of this is driven by fossil fuels. Their fossil fuel energy system is in a protect mode. They see the future as being bleak, that they pollute, they, and that all of the various mechanisms for producing energy that are not dependent on them are a challenge to their dominance. So I would suggest that this ordinance is driven not by the needs of property owners, not by the needs of the military, but by outside forces seeking to protect their interests. And I would ask, as a citizen, that you carefully consider that before you pass this ordinance. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman, next on the list is Mark Finlayson.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening. Apologize for my laryngitis, getting over a cold. I'll try to be brief. I am a resident of Trent Woods, Mark Finlayson, but I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Allies for Cherry Point. Tomorrow, ACT. ACT is the advocacy organization for Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point and the pilots, the missions and assets of the 2nd Marine Aircraft Wing, and the tenant commands aboard Cherry Point, most especially Fleet Readiness Center East. Our organization is made up of county governments, municipal governments, corporations, and citizens who support our mission to protect, sustain, and grow Cherry Point. Our board is well represented here tonight, in addition to Vice Chairman Dacey, who represents Craven County on our board, and Manager Jack White, who serves on our board in ex officio capacity. We also have Havelock Mayor Will Lewis, who serves as our president, Tyler Harris, who's a board member, Frank Bodorf, who is the ex officio member of the board as Havelock's manager, and our Government Affairs Coordinator, Jamie Normant. Although our board has not taken an official position on this draft ordinance, ACT has, over many years, taken a position in support of strong ordinances to protect the mission of our pilots to train. And in that regard, we've been involved with Pamlico County, with Carteret County, and with the statutory work done at the state of North Carolina on this issue. Wind energy as part of a larger tall structures discussion has been held for many years in ACT's Regional Planning Committee, of which Don Baumgartner is an active member. And so I would say to you, just in a couple of quick points, that generally, ACT supports any ordinances that enhance the ability of our Marine Corps aviators to train, and indeed, aviators for all the other service branches that also use Cherry Point's airspace for training. And we support ordinances that seek to implement the recommendations of the most recent joint land use study, the J-LOSE, of which Craven County was an important partner. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. We are very glad that Craven County is taking up this important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Robert Golden. I'm a resident of Craven County. I live at 494 Alexis Drive. I have an interest in clean and renewable energy. I just want to make a few points, and I am, I am not an expert in this area, but, a couple of things. Number one, I know the, this ordinance, proposed change does not include right now a property value guarantee, although one has been asked, you know, that's been asked to be included. I, not being a lawyer, however, I think that this would be a field day for lawyers, and it may well end up being one in Carteret County as well, if they've in fact included this in this. I mean, if you, for example, if somebody wants to build a mall, are you asking them to create a property value guarantee? If somebody wants to build a development right next to DeBerna, or, you know, adding somewhere, are you asking them to include a property value guarantee that they're not going to, this is not going to negatively affect property values in the area? Why then specifically for these tall structures? To me, this sounds like a case of kind of pure discrimination, if you will, against this kind of, you know, firms, and I think it would, you know, lead to a legally indefensible position. Number two, I find this argument about the military, the military has already, in fact, you know, said that these, these structures will not have the kind of negative effects that have been claimed. I think it's, you know, it's, it's good we have organizations supporting the military, but I think, you know, the military officials themselves, the people in authority, need to be consulted on this. Moreover, this is a statewide issue. It's an issue that's now being dealt with at the statewide level, and I really don't think it's a good use of our time to become involved with that in a highly detailed way. I also think there's an issue here of why are we foreclosing the future? Why are we saying to somebody in a, in an area, rural area of this county, no, you can't do this? You know, and of course, the issue of property rights, as noted, cuts both ways. I also find it ironic that there, you know, many of us want smaller government. We're making an argument on that basis, but what we're doing here is asking the government, in fact, to become more restrictive, not less restrictive. You know, do we believe in markets? Yes, we do, but in this case, well, maybe we're going to highly restrict potential markets that would develop for renewable energy in this area. That's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, next on the list, Frank Bodorf.
Thank you, sir. My name is Frank Bodorf, 109 Boros Landing, New Bern, North Carolina. Thanks for tackling this tough issue. I want to be quite clear, I am the city manager for the city of Havelock. I'm also on the ACT Board of Directors as an ex officio member. I'm also on the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, but I'm here representing myself tonight. Also, I'm former commander of Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point. I spent most of my 28-year career flying in and out of Cherry Point and training on the ranges in and around this area as an AVAP pilot. I got to tell you, just to separate some of the wheat from the chaff, the military does not have a direct line to oppose wind power projects. It goes through the DoD Clearing House. Military services can say yes, DoD can say no. The DoD Clearing House falls under a political appointee in the Pentagon. So the military services have their hands tied of being completely truthful about their opinions on a lot of these wind power projects. I've spent a lot of my, the last years of my career and since then, helping to protect the ability to train in North Carolina. The impact of Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point is about a $2.1 billion impact annually. They're the biggest employer of not only, of anybody, not only in Craven County, but in Carteret County. If Marines can't train or fly out of Cherry Point, the military will find places that they can do it. That doesn't mean Cherry Point is at risk of closing, but potentially, they could be at risk of a reduction in size if they can't get all the training locally that they need to do. With a $2.1 billion... With a $2.1 billion impact annually, a 20% reduction, you can do the math, could be fairly significant to our area. If you want to talk about the impact to property values, take the $400 million impact out of this area, economic impact, and I think what you'll see is property values in this area would be significantly depressed, and trying to replace something like FRC East or Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point would be fairly difficult. So I think the steps you're taking are good. I think they're going to do a long, go a long way to help protect the Marine Corps' ability to train in North Carolina, and hopefully protect the future of all the citizens of Craven County, because it's going to help. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, that concludes the public hearing for tall structures.
Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, the fun part of our evening, the petition of citizens. Individuals will be restricted to their comments to 45 minutes each. No, I'm sorry. It's just, four minutes each. And, and Commissioner Liner does have a list.
You ready?
Yes, sir.
Susan Long.
I have 45 minutes. Thank you. It's about time. Susan Long, 1990, Acorn Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. The Equal Rights Amendment is concerned with nothing more than the legal rights of all citizens, and nothing less than a constitutional guarantee of equal rights under the law. When all persons are not treated equally before the law, someone is less than a full citizen. Whenever there is discrimination, we have lost part of our freedom and our democracy. It is up to you to seize this historic opportunity, to move the dream of legal justice one step closer to reality. The place is here, the time is now. We need to loosen the bonds which make women second-class citizens. Now, I'll give you a little story, personal story. Back when I was a sweet young thing, I had saved my money, and I thought, called my dad and said, Dad, I got my money saved, I'm going to go buy an MGB. And he says, well, you know, that's nice, let me go with you. And I thought, cool, we're going to have a daughter daddy day. So there we go, heading off to Rocky Mount to buy this car. Well, I found out years later, the reason he really went with me was to make sure I was not discriminated against, to make sure I could get that loan, of which he made me get a loan, because I really had the money to pay for it, but you know, you got to establish credit. So he was with me to make sure that I got that car. A few years later, saved my money again, Dad, I'm going to buy a house. Well, that's fine, that's fine. When are you going to the bank? I said, you know, I'm going, he said, just wait a couple of days and go. I said, all right, I'll go, I think it was a Wednesday. He says, okay, that's fine. Well, I found out later, my dad was, happened to be an executive officer of BB&amp;T, but he had made the phone calls to make sure I got that loan. Because prior to that, you know, women couldn't go in and just sign up and get a loan. You had to have daddy sign for you, or your husband to sign for you, or whatever. We were not full citizens, and we still are not full citizens. So things need to change. Young girls today, they don't realize they don't have equal rights, because the laws have changed, but as you know, with laws, they can be rescinded. Laws can change, rights can be taken away. The only protection we have is the Constitution. We have an opportunity tonight to follow in the footsteps of the city of New Bern. On December 12th, 2017, the city of New Bern unanimously adopted the ERA resolution and sent the endorsement of this resolution to Raleigh. The city of New Bern has now joined other towns and municipalities in our state, showing support for the Equal Rights Amendment. We hope it will not be long before our county's name can be added to the list. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir, Pat Chelko?
Chelko.
Sorry.
Hello, guys.
Good evening, ma'am.
I want to extend an invitation to you, and I'm hoping that you'll save the date, January 20th, 1:00 p.m. We're going to have a gathering of We the People. We the People is for all people, and it's going to feature Marina Groll, co-chair of the nonpartisan North Carolina ERA Alliance, and she's going to address the current work in North Carolina to support equal constitutional rights for women. Because I'm sure you know, in 2010, Supreme Court Justice Anton Scalia opined that the Constitution does not prohibit sexual discrimination. The only right it specifically affirms to be equal for women and men is the right to vote. So we hope that you'll come. It'll be at 1:00 p.m. We're still working on the venue, where it'll be, but you'll be getting your official invitations in the mail, well, in the email. So we hope you'll keep the date open, January 20th, 1:00 p.m.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
On that date, I will not be here.
Oh.
I'll be in Virginia, have my daughter move her new apartment.
Okay.
And my grandchildren, so I will be there.
You're excused.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
It should also be noted that the moving company would take your daughter's business anyway. I mean...
I want to be there, because she wants some money.
Register?
Yes, sir.
Jamisha Harris?
Jamisha Harris. Hold on a minute.
Good evening, and gentlemen. I'm back now as an elected official, but I'm representing Jamisha Harris from 222 Monterey Circle, and I just found out that we can't leave you presents on your desk, we have to give them to the clerks. So I will give it to her at the end of the night, but I just wanted to come and basically just let you know that when we did it, December 12th, the Board of Aldermen we represented for the city of New Bern, it didn't cost a thing to adopt the motion to, you know, say that we understand what the ERA represents, and that we recognize women should have rights. So I feel like, you know, hopefully after tonight, you guys can get together and discuss it, and maybe we can get, you know, the votes for you guys to go ahead and adopt the resolution to support the ERA, because it costs nothing to do that. It's just our time to keep coming here and speaking to you, gentlemen, but respectfully, thank you for your time.
And I'll make this even briefer. You all know, I spoke, I've spoken with you, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
3507 Taylor Street, New Bern.
Thank you.
North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
You all know that I'm here to support the ERA amendment, and that I firmly believe that you would risk nothing by passing a resolution supporting the Equal Rights Amendment. And I ask you again, as a citizen, that you do that. There is no reason why, in this day and age, that women in our society are not provided with the same constitutional protection that men are. It is a sad commentary on our country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Helen Robinson. You should have been there, but you're, I got you.
Happy New Year, guys. My name is Helen Robinson, and I live at 1906 Cayenne Court in New Bern. At the beginning of every new year, it's natural to look back and look ahead. So I want to do that kind of reflection with you all for just a few minutes about the ERA. In 1920, in 1920, American women were given the constitutional right to vote through the 19th Amendment. As you've already heard, that's the only right for women currently protected under our Constitution. We just began 2018. 2020 is two years away. 2020 will mark 100 years, 100 years, since women gained the right to vote. Will women be granted other basic constitutional rights by 2020? That's the question I want to give you tonight. It's been 98 years, gentlemen. It's time to secure basic constitutional rights for women in the United States of America. As I'm sure you know, the ERA has wide support among many people of all political stripes, despite today's polarized culture. Until 1980, equal rights for women was a part of a national Republican platform. North Carolina has an opportunity now to be on the right side of history regarding basic constitutional rights for women. Your vote matters. This is not just some kind of exercise we're asking you guys to do. Your vote matters, because when you adopt this resolution, and notice that I said when, not if, when you adopt this resolution, you signal the state legislature that it's time. It's time to give women basic constitutional rights. During the upcoming 2018 election cycle, candidates from all parties are going to be asked to stand up for the protection of basic rights of women. What will you do? Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Tamara Leonard.
It's Tamara Leonard. Is that okay? That's all right. Tamara Leonard, 921 Bryce's Court, New Bern. I would also like to address the Equal Rights Amendment. As a mother of two girls, I think there is a lot of validity in it, however, I am not a resident of the city of New Bern, I live in the county, and am not allowed to speak at the Board of Aldermen's or anything of that nature. And the resolution that was passed by the Board of Aldermen, I have a problem with some of the language. It says, "Help correct systemic sex discrimination," assumed to have expired in 1982. And I have done some research on this, and my point is, is one, I, this bill was written in 1972, and was not ratified within the 10-year limit of it. They have, it has been brought up, again, the U.S. Supreme Court in Coleman versus Miller, that the Supreme Court had ruled that the validity of state ratifications of a constitutional amendment is political in nature, and so not a matter properly assigned to the judiciary. It also held that as a political question, it was up to Congress to determine if an amendment with no time limit for ratification was still viable after an extended lapse of time, based on, quote, "the political, social, and economic conditions which have prevailed during the period since the submission of the amendment," end of quote. Also, in Dillon, before the Supreme Court, in Dillon, the court held that Congress may impose reasonable time limits for ratification. The court stated, quote, "We do not find anything in Article 5 which suggests that an amendment once proposed is to be open to ratification for all time, or that ratification in some of the states may be separated from that in others by many years and yet be effective." My position, gentlemen, is that this needs to go back to Congress. It needs to be updated, because in 1972, we were not facing the diversity that we have right now in an equal rights amendment. We are not just talking about women, we are talking about LGBT and everything else. This amendment needs to be updated, one way or the other, but it is not justifiable for us in Craven County in 2018 to ratify or send to the state legislature that we're going to say, oh, great, 1972, let's update it, let's get our representatives to do their jobs. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Sir, that ends the public comments.
Very good. Okay, we have before us the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? If not, I'll have...
Make a motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. It's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dacey?
Yes. Okay, moving on to departmental matters, planning, Don Baumgartner, Planning Director.
Earlier, you heard the comments from the public concerning the tall structures ordinance, and as the board had been advised by the J-LOSE committee, as well as members of the various committees that serve in a capacity to advise ACT, that additional protections were necessary, based on the J-LOSE study that identified numerous areas and weaknesses that we had in not only our ordinance, but some other ordinances that existed as well. And as a result of that, we did undertake to look at some of the ordinances that were identified as being documents that had some very good, strong policies in them, and we did incorporate those into the proposed draft ordinance that we had a hearing on tonight, and that had been posted on the county's website, and also advertised in the local newspaper on the 22nd of December, and again on the 29th of December. At this particular time, you know, you can consider moving forward to adopt those amendments, or you can defer that to a, you know, a later time period. If you did want to make any substantial changes to the documents, then we would be required to go again through a public hearing process if we wanted to consider making changes to the ordinance, and that's, that's North Carolina general statute. So if you've got any other questions, we're here to try to, to answer those tonight, but I can rest assured, we did hear some things about not affecting the operations that would be involved in either the Marine Corps Air Station, but there, there is certainly concern with the ability for a wind tower to be constructed, because when that occurs, there is the situation involved where all the airspace that is, is under Cherry Point's command, as far as both civilian and military aircraft, that these windmills would cause a problem with the interruption of the radar systems, and it would, it would require a real potential for conflicts, or a tremendous amount of effort to try to do away with that particular interference. So that was one reason we went back to revisit this, and one reason that it came out very strongly, that even though we had an ordinance, it, any type of, you know, wind operation would cause us some real great concerns as it relates to these facilities. And keep in mind that not only do we have Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point and Oak Grove, as well as helicopters from Camp Lejeune, but we also have aircraft that pass through our area on the low-level military training routes that go offshore to do their training on the military electronic radar targets that are out there along the coast, off Dare County, as well as Atlantic Field. So there, there is an active concern, no question about what these facilities can do if they are constructed in, within this airspace of our military-controlled areas. if they are constructed in, within this airspace of our military-controlled areas, military-controlled airspace areas.
Are there any questions from the board?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance as written.
Commissioner Linder, I, I would very much like to do that as well. I have one concern, and I probably needed to consult counsel with this. It's my recollection that according to our bylaws, the evening that we've had the hearing, if we're going to take up the ordinance, we have to pass it with a unanimous vote.
Actually, for an ordinance such as this, since a public hearing was required, it is a simple majority vote.
So the, the absence of Chairman Mark does not cause us any concern here tonight?
Correct, because a public hearing is required by statute to pass this ordinance.
Okay. There is a motion to accept?
And I will second it.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any debate?
I would like to make the comments. I know there was a number of individuals that came before the board this evening with concerns about this ordinance. And this Board of Commissioners has, for the last few years, attended numerous meetings across this state with officials from all reams. And one of the things that has been pointed to us as a Board of Commissioners is one of the greatest risks that we have for Cherry Point is wind energy. Other folks will say differently, but I have great confidence in a lot of folks that I've talked to across this state, one who sits in the back of this room tonight, Tyler Harris, who was a liaison for Cherry Point. And, you know, I think one of our main goals as a Board of Commissioners is the protection of Cherry Point. We've got to do everything that we can to ensure that it stays here and that there is nothing that jeopardizes the long-term effect with a BRAC. We spend thousands upon thousands upon thousands of dollars in this state and in this county for lobbyists to go to Washington, to go to Raleigh, for the protection of Cherry Point. We're always on the chopping block. And people say, "Well, that's just political fears." It's not. It's reality. We go to Washington. We have inside talks with a lot of these officials. And Cherry Point is always, when they start talking about a BRAC, we're always at the top of the list. I cannot do my job as an elected official to serve every citizen of this county if I vote in any way to not do something for the protection of Cherry Point because without it, our county economically is gone. Eastern North Carolina is gone. And so that's why tonight I have to support this ordinance. And that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner. Thank you very much. Are there any other statements?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that anybody that, I don't know, if you're going to vote on it and if it passes, that's great. That's, that's, I'm going to vote in affirmative, but I don't want anybody to take away that this county is anti-alternate energy because we are absolutely not. We recently passed a solar ordinance, but the main reason that we passed that was to protect adjacent landowners, give them some privacy between a large solar farm and, and their property, and, and also because solar panels, as was explained to us by several experts, can contain very dangerous chemicals. And in the event that a solar farm is abandoned, somebody's going to have to pick up the tab to prevent those chemicals from leaching into the ground, and that somebody is generally the taxpayer if the person that developed it filed bankruptcy or just left. On wind energy, I support wind energy, just not when it comes at any potential, causing any potential problems with the mission of Cherry Point Marine Air Station. And we've talked about the economic impact of Cherry Point, $2 billion, $2.1 billion. That's part of the equation. But I'm going to tell you right now, if Cherry Point ever closed, the real estate values in this county would devalue probably by, this is not scientific, but I'm going to tell you 20 to 25 percent because it would be thousands of people trying to sell their house that live on the base at the same time. And it would just, it would be devastating to our area. So I do support alternate energy sources, absolutely do, but not when it can interfere with the mission of Cherry Point. We heard from several people tonight, and I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate people with the opposing stance on this issue. However, I think the person that would probably be the most knowledgeable source on this would be the former base commander that was a career aviator in the Marine Corps and the past commander of Cherry Point Marine Air Station. And he says we need to pass this, so I'm going to have to go on his opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
At Cherry Point Base, I'm behind the base maybe less than half a mile. So I'm willing to support the Cherry Point Base along with what Jason just said. We need a base there, and I'm going forward for it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say I was, I worked down Cherry Point. I went there in '67 and I got riffed in '70. So I know how riffed feel. And it was, it was about three or four years before I was able to get back down there. And I know jobs were so scarce, couldn't find a decent job right here in '67 I couldn't. And it was hard on my family, hard on me, but I was just blessed to get back down there about three years later. So I know what Cherry Point offered this community. And I could not in good standing really take a chance on Cherry Point leaving with the money that it's putting in this community. We're just blessed to even have Cherry Point here. They tried to get rid of it. We had to go to Washington, DC on several occasions to try and save Cherry Point. So I feel like that I'm obligated to the men, the women, the raise, and all of them that's lived, come to this place to live. And the taxes that is generated from Cherry Point, I, I don't see how we can make it without Cherry Point in this area here.
Mr. Chairman, matter of fact, I've got one more thing to say. Matter of fact, in 1965, I did my first job on Cherry Point Base, working. So that's a good thing, being in high school, be able to work on the base. A lot of people don't have, have been to work on, on Cherry Point Base like I did. And I was in high school until I graduated, 1965, '64. So, thank you.
Members of the board, thank you very much for your comments. I want to just speak to this briefly. As you know, you've, you've entitled me with the opportunity to serve on Allies for Cherry Point over these number of years, to be the board's representative on that, on that fine We, of course, looked at this tall structure ordinance five, six years ago, and we put into place something that we thought was going to be adequate. And indeed, over time, we've had to learn that what we thought was good and solid work just needed to be improved upon a bit more. And a couple of years ago, that joint land use study was in, engaged in, and Craven County participated in that effort. Through that effort, we learned from a number of sources, folks that have, are well steeped in the public policy arena. And there was a unanimous effort on their part to help us as a community understand some of the deficiencies, deficiencies that we have within our current ordinance structure. And this was, without question, among those of the highest priority. And I'm just proud that this board and the staff have been able to come together to work and, and learning from the other counties that have already gone down this road to develop something that, while maybe not perfect, Mr. Drose, it's moving in the right direction. And, and I suspect that we will even have more changes to make in the future as time goes on. But I want to thank you, sir, for all of your efforts, your time, your commitment to our communities, both Carteret County and Craven County, in helping us to understand this from a public policy perspective. Now, as a member of Allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow, I've had the occasion to go to the Pentagon, to meet with the folks that work inside that building, the folks at the DoD Clearing House, and to suggest that there are protections in place within our Department of Defense, particularly in the past administration, that will somehow or another protect the military, they're simply not there. Those standards that were put into place were done at the whim of the, the environmental community that were looking to see other forms of energy development that just simply didn't rely on fossil fuels. And what the end, the end product was going to be was, we'll mitigate that problem if there's something that's going to take place on a, on a military base. We can all mitigate so far, and eventually you don't have any more military bases left. And as the guy who's representing this board on the Allies for Cherry Point Tomorrow, that's just simply not going to happen. So again, Commissioners, I want to thank you very much. I'm going to vote for this thing. I was, I was willing to go ahead and let it go for another meeting if we needed to spend more time on it, but I'm very happy with the work. And so unless there's any further comments, I'll move for a vote. Mr. County Manager, do we need a roll call on this or?
Only if you want, sir.
Is there the will of anybody? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Mr. Baumgartner, request for public hearing on the CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Grant?
Yes, sir. The county has been notified by the state of North Carolina, the North Carolina Rural Economic Development Agency, that additional CDBG funding is available for units of local government that did receive damages as a result of Hurricane Matthew. These funds can be used to perform housing-related activities and public facility improvements that support housing activities for low- to moderate-income persons. In order to apply for these grant funds, two public hearings must be held, and the maximum grant award is $750,000. Grant applications are due by the end of February, in fact, February 28th. This is part of the effort being undertaken by the state since there was shortfall in the total amount of funding that was available to assist the people that got damaged during Hurricane Matthew. This is an effort by the state to take some Community Development Block grant money and try to assist those individuals that have not received any assistance to date. So if there is an interest in undertaking this, we would like to request to apply for these funds. We would like to request the board to have a public hearing on February the 5th at 7:00 PM, and then another public hearing on February 19th at 8:30 AM.
Is it? Yes.
We have people that have immediately after the storm, and since then, they have been asking if there are any type of assistance available to help them try to get their homes fixed back to the point that they make them livable. Some people are displaced and other ones are living in very poor conditions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions of Mr. Baumgartner? Is there a motion to call for a hearing on February 5th or February 18th?
So moving on motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Soil and Water Conservation, Craven County Streams Debris, or as Commissioner Mark might call it, Debris Removal and Beaver Management Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing tonight?
I want to make sure Tom watches this.
This is going to be a two-part. First one's going to be on the stream debris removal program, and then the second will be an update on the status of the beaver management program here in the county. All right. In early 2017, the county applied for and received grants from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and the North Carolina Golden Leaf Foundation to remove down tree, downed debris from waterways impacted by Hurricane Matthew. In November of 2017, requests for proposals were posted on the county website, and emails about the bid opportunity are sent to the contractors on our debris removal contractor list. December 6th, two proposals were received, one from the Davis Company and one from J&amp;J Environmental. Both bids for the Golden Leaf project areas, and these were for the five creeks that we previously maintained, both of the bids received were higher than the approved grant that we received from Golden Leaf. Also, one of the bids received was higher than the state grant funds we received total. And with a project of this magnitude totaling over 112 stream miles, staff feel that the county should have at least two contractors working on this project. Due to the high bid amount, county staff recommends that the board rescind the bids as presented and rebid the project. The first rebid would be for the Golden Leaf project areas only, and the second rebid would be for the state disaster project areas. We're requesting that the Board of Commissioners rescind these bids and that we rebid the project.
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion that we rescind the bids and, and rebid the projects.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have one I, it's not really a discussion pertaining to this, but if I may.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate county staff going out and looking at Hoods Creek, which is, which had backed up a few weeks ago, and somebody went out there. Was it you that?
It was myself and Jason from Planet.
Okay, well, I appreciate the guys for doing that. But I did get a call, or not a call, but an email the night that they had, it's starting to back up again. And I was just wondering if you could give me, shed some light on what might be causing that? Is it tile size issue?
Well, what we actually found out about that one, it is actually beavers in there stopping that up. So, yeah, that's what happened with the, with the tile. That's what caused the blockage to begin with. Now, originally, we thought it was just a blocked tile, just stuff that had floated in there. And DOT went out and they removed the blockages and, but then it's been put back in there. And the USDA trapper has gone out there and looked at the site, and he said it is a beaver problem.
Okay.
And he was at the time acquiring landowner permission to help trap in that area.
Okay, so they're working on that?
They're working on that right now. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say that I appreciate what Don and his office did, grew up there with the city, some of the city staff, and look at the ditches up there in the Duffield area. I've been talking to Congressman Sellers about coming up there, looking at these, some of them said they were coming. I haven't seen any of them yet. But I look like, I appreciate what the county already done, but I, if they continue to let the state know that we, we have a bad ditch in Duffield. If ever be a storm, the state going to pay for it with both arms. So we need to do something about that ditch before, before that storm come here and be flooded out and wiped out Duffield and other areas because this is a bad, bad, bad place up there. And we talked with the city, trying to get the city to do some things. They wanted to say it was somebody else's job to do it. And then it wasn't their land and hothed us every day land. So we have been having a problem with the city and, and the state to get something done. And I appreciate what our, our employees went around and looked at it and saw some things in there that we could do to kind of let it last a little longer. But we need, really need some work done to that, that ditch up there. That ditch running at Duffield, it runs in Sunnyside. It runs almost two-thirds, two-thirds of the, of the area of New Bern, that, that ditch up there. So we need some work done with that there. I want to kind of forget about it, and I want the city to forget about it. So I keep bringing it up.
Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, the next part we were going to do was an update on the beaver management project. Now, you guys received in your packet, and we're going to also have a PowerPoint also. I didn't want to be too wordy, and sometimes the pictures are a lot better, so. Basically, in September 2017, the contractors began work on these stream segments. So we'll just start here. I have to turn this on. Help me, Chad. All right, so this is just a recap of the groups, the project areas that we're working on, the four different project areas. All right, work, this is, this is the wordy part. Project Group Two, Bachelor Creek. This is, I think I might have.
This is one beaver.
Anyway, in Bachelor Creek, this project was awarded to Beaver Be Gone. The main creek, they've removed so far out of there 61 beavers and 37 dams out of the main run. This is just the main branch. Rollover Creek, this is a little side branch, 46 beavers and over 74 dams have come out of that creek. Beaver Dam Branch, of course, 17 beavers, 17 dams. Jumping Run Branch, 19 beavers, 14 dams. Round Tree Branch, 13 beavers, 15 dams. So total for Group Two, the Bachelor Creek project area is 156 beavers and 147 beaver Now, of all the project areas, the initial work is completed in Project Two. That's the Bachelor Creek. They've completed the work. They're doing the follow-up work right now. Anytime there's new activity comes in, beavers come back, they're going in there getting them. And they have, right now, they've asked for five to seven days' advance notice of the stream debris removal projects being started so that they can go back in there and make sure everything's good. And at this time, they're guaranteeing their work through February 15th, 2018. That's a pretty good guarantee they had for the time. This is an example, this is on Beaver Dam Branch, that's a good name for a branch, but one of them, and you can see right here, that dam is probably holding back three, four feet of water. This one here, now, these are pictures that he took. What we're looking at here, this is a fence post out in the woods where somebody used to have their cows out there, their cattle, and it's now flooded, completely useless to them because of beavers. This is Bachelor Creek, upstream of Tuscaloosa Rims Road, same thing. Now, if you'll notice out here behind it, all this area out here, all that timber and all those woods are dead now because of being flooded. Completely lost property value. This one on Bachelor Creek, this is a before shot. Now, this one's holding back a couple of feet of water, before, after. This is just as they've breached the dam, letting the water flow. Same thing, Round Tree Branch. Now, this dam here is holding back a good three or four feet of water. That's the before picture. That's as he's gotten it torn out. You can see all this space out here where there used to be trees, and it's all dead. Just destroyed property. Same thing here, is a before picture. After, I think he's holding on for dear life on that side of the dam right now. Now, in the Bachelor Creek area, this is an example right here, Rollover Creek. Everywhere that you see a red dot here, this is only a 3.8-mile section of creek. Now, every red dot you see is a beaver dam that he removed. Anybody will reference, that's Highway 70, that's Rollover Creek road that loops around. All right, let's see, Jumping Run Branch. Now, this one, it's a little further to the end. The branch comes up like this, this is the area where he had all the problems at. Beaver Dam Branch, most of the problems here are on the downstream end next to where it goes into Bachelor Creek. Oh, wait a minute, that was wrong. That was Beaver Dam Branch. This is Round Tree Branch, had just a few, you see these red dots? And you see this dark area in the middle? That's where you can see it from the aerial photography, the flooded areas, the dead trees, all the trees are grown. It should look like this right here. You see, this is live trees, this is dead. It's absolutely destroyed because of beavers. My intent here was to show the main run of Bachelor Creek, but it's actually picking up all the rest of them. You can start to see all those red dots. Now, Project Group Three, these guys also got this one, this is the Core Creek Project with the unnamed tributaries on. Now, this project is still ongoing. I don't have the number of dams, but he has given me an update on the number of beavers. So so far, he's removed 71 beavers out of the Core Creek drainage area that we're working on. Yes, sir?
Let me ask a question, Chair. When you catch these beavers, you relocate them somewhere else? How you do that? Because I make sure it don't come hollow.
No, they're not coming to hollow. They're being managed.
Being managed. Because I know that some people eat them.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, beavers are good. Because I had some before.
Yes, sir.
Before what? Before tonight?
No, not tonight, this.
Take them to the tavern house.
Yeah, that's good though. I get them, they're real good.
All right. So that's the Core Creek, but you're right. That's Core Creek Project. Now, here's just one example. This was off a flat swamp. This is a flooded bean field, soybeans. You know, this was harvest time of the year, farmers trying to harvest their crops. The soybeans that would have remained on this end of the field are not going to be any good. They're going to be gone. That's not, you know, we see the timber loss, this is a crop loss. This is on Core Creek, unnamed tributary number two. Now, this is a before picture of this dam. Now, what we're going to try, we've got a video here. Dennis is going to help me out with this. These guys went in there with a GoPro camera, so this is going to be during the time that he ripped the dam. See the water flowing? And I'm going to have to narrate for you. All this is getting ready to show the flooded area out here in the woods. All that water's backed up from one dam. And here in a little while, like he said in there, it'll all be drained out, and then they'll move on upstream. So that was a little 19-second video they had. That's good, that worked good. Now, the second two groups, Mr. Claude Taylor, he is currently, his current total is 48 beavers caught, and he's in the process of removing dams now. Now, he doesn't have, you know, the GPS points and the GoPro cameras and all that, because Mr. Claude Taylor, he's old-school trapper. He doesn't have all this stuff, but he still does a good job, and he is, that was as of the last update. Now, he didn't, he hadn't removed as many dams yet because that's his point he uses to catch the beavers. And I think that's what I had with that. Does anybody have any questions?
Were you able to use dynamite at all during any of this?
We were not.
That's unfortunate.
Yep, that costed too much money.
Oh.
Any more questions?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to appointments. Board action, appointments will be effective immediately unless otherwise specified. Let's see here, we've got Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, still looking for folks. You know, if anybody's interested in serving on a board, please talk to us about this. These are very interesting things for people to do in our community. It's very necessary, worthwhile time, worthwhile of your time. So we've got the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. Craven County Health Board, Dr. Ron Preston is going to be leaving, and physician needs to come in and be replaced. We don't have any.
Mr. Chairman, I have someone that may be interested in that position.
Outstanding.
Get the information in the next day or two.
Okay. Fireman's Relief Fund, Board of Trustees. Term ending, John Harrell in Tri-Community. Keith Gaskins has been, his name has been placed before us for consideration, and a volunteer information and interest sheet has been provided. It's in your packets.
Mr. Chairman, I move for Keith Gaskins.
Very good. Without anybody saying that, we'll approve that by acclamation. Upcoming appointments, Craven Aging Planning Board, Dora Jones, and Craven Community Tile Protection Team, Gail Horn, Mary Mallard, Debbie Rogers, and Jeff Merritt. And I believe that's it with respect to current appointments. County Attorney's Report, Mr. Hicks.
Good evening. Good evening. The first matter before you tonight is a request from the City of New Bern regarding 828 Eubank Street. This is, we get these requests occasionally. This is property that's jointly owned between the county and the city from a tax foreclosure. The city does plan to demolish the property. Demolition would be $3,800. The tax value of the land only, once the structure is gone, would be $4,000. So the city is requesting, as they normally do on these projects, to either split the cost or for the county to donate its interest to the city, and it's been the county's policy to donate its interest to the city, and that's what we recommend.
Mr. Chairman, make that motion, sir.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve what the county attorney has asked here with respect to 828 Eubank Street. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next matter is the same request, but it's for 1213 Mechanic Street. You'll see that the estimate of demolition there is $2,800. Again, the land value is $4,000. The request from the city is to shed demolition or to transfer the interest. We recommend that the county transfer its interest.
Is there a motion?
Still move.
Been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded. To concur with the attorney's request for the property located at 1213 Mechanic Street in New Bern. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And Mr. Chairman, the last matter is a requested technical amendment, if you will, to the Animal Welfare Ordinance, and if you'll refer to your paragraph 7(c). If you'll recall, this ordinance originally basically started out as an anti-tethering ordinance, and so what the first drafts and the first few models had were basically prohibitions. But as the ordinance was refined and amended, it became a list of dos and don'ts, so to speak. And if you'll notice in the very introductory paragraph, not the actual requirements of the ordinance, but just the introductory paragraph, it had originally been written that any of the following would be, is prohibited by the ordinance. But again, subsequently, we added provisions that are required to be done. So this is just the language to say that you just need to comply with the following provisions. This, since this ordinance did not require a public hearing, it would require unanimous vote to approve it tonight. I would recommend that we still vote anyway. That way, on the next reading, it would just be a simple majority, and in case someone will not be here, next meeting as well.
Very good. Is there a motion to amend?
Still moved.
It's been moved?
Seconded.
And seconded to amend the ordinance with respect to the animal welfare? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unfortunately, it appears as though Commissioner Mark is not here, so we cannot say that that is a unanimous vote.
Correct.
So we will carry this on in the next meeting.
Yes, sir. At which time it'll be just a simple majority.
Thank you.
That's all happening.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners. As Patrick's leaving, I got to tell you, he has an uncanny resemblance to Kenny Rogers tonight for some reason. I don't know if anybody else picked up on that, or was it just me?
He's a gambler, huh?
Yeah, I kept, I kept thinking about that song as he was talking. Sorry for that. I have a few items for you tonight. First thing, I wanted to update the board on a meeting that happened before Christmas that I mentioned at our last meeting with Onslow County. Commissioner Dacey, Chairman Mark, myself, and Scott Harrelson all attended to learn more about what they're doing with the detox center that they have on their radar. It was very, very informative to me. As we've gone through this process and had public meetings and heard public feedback, the one thing we keep hearing is that there's a lack of detox options for families who are suffering, with loved ones who have an opioid addiction. Onslow County is full steam ahead to address this issue. They have a current existing building that they received funding from the state on, from the Dorothea Dix Fund. It's a 16-bed capacity facility. They're working with Trillium and Carteret County and the city of Jacksonville at this time. They have already drafted an MOU amongst those partners, and we were just kind of there to learn what they were doing, but I think it's a great opportunity if we're interested in pursuing this. We may be a little bit behind the curve here. We were invited to attend another meeting, which would be the whole group. We just met with Onslow County, so it would be Carteret and Trillium and Jacksonville. I think that meeting will happen sometime in early January. I would certainly defer to Commissioner Dacey and Commissioner Mark on it. I believe fully in the concept of regionalism. This is one of those issues that if we were to tackle alone, I think we're looking at upwards of a million dollars in capital cost and a significant amount in operational deficits each year, because these facilities are not set up to make money. They're set up to serve a purpose, to treat someone who has addiction. I think the folks at the table realize that. I don't think this is going to be a cheap venture, but we certainly learned that there may be a better way to maximize current county expenditures in the mental health arena that we could target that money to this facility versus some of the current items that we're doing with Trillium. I think we need to learn a lot more about that. That was the first time I'd ever had that subject broached with me. There is a tremendous amount of excitement in Onslow County. I think from their elected officials' standpoint, we have to realize that when we've seen our name show up in statistics, being in the top 10 in overdose, Onslow County saw their name in one of the top, I believe it was 15 localities in North America, the United States that were suffering from this crisis. So they are certainly motivated there to move forward. Carteret County also is suffering the same problem. So I'm available for questions here tonight. I guess I'm just, I'm looking for the board to possibly engage, allow staff to continue to move forward this and attend the additional meeting in Onslow with the task force. Without objection, I guess.
Yeah, I would strongly suggest that we allow the county manager to move forward with this. I will begin discussions with Trillium immediately tomorrow, if the board is so inclined to move forward, to see if we can start to reallocate the contribution that we are making as a county through our ABC funds. And what other resources are there, Jack?
It's the ABC bottle tax.
Yeah, the ABC bottle tax. That we would then dedicate towards this effort, and it would be my goal to work with the county manager and Trillium to bridge whatever costs might be associated with this endeavor through the use of those funds.
Now, this is, however, I want to make sure, I don't think I said, this is a short-term detox. This is seven days or less. This is not the long-term residential care, which is something that we'll have to continue to work on. I believe that, that's a much larger lift than initially getting an option for a short-term detox. But being worked on, I want to say that. It is being worked on.
Sir, I have no problems with moving, I have no problems moving forward. I think we need to hear it out. There's a lot of questions I would have.
Yes, sir.
At this point right now, but to move forward to get those, I think it's.
The way things are moving forward right now is Onslow County has developed an agreement with Carteret County. Again, as the county manager suggested, we have a 16-bed facility. There's a belief that there's a need out of Onslow County for six of those 16 beds, four beds out of Carteret County, and we think that we'd probably be right in the middle of those two. So we would likely be looking at meeting the space facility with the three counties engaged. Now, those beds would not be there exclusively for the enjoyment and use of people from those three counties. Trillium, because it is a provider, would be able to have counties from, have individuals from other counties step into those beds if they're not being used. And, you know, obviously, if some revenue could be generated from that, that'd be terrific. That would help defer anything. But it certainly, it demonstrates that we are being very serious about this issue here in Craven County. And so we've asked them to provide the documents that they have entered into or that they are about to enter into with Carteret County, and then I would imagine that we will kind of piggyback off of the work that's been engaged in there to be helpful.
Commissioner Lyer, to answer your question, I think there's a lot that still needs to be flushed out of this, so I don't think there's an immediate decision. I just think if we're going to get engaged, we got to do it now.
Yeah, I have no problem. Like I said, moving forward, I think there's a lot of answers you all be getting that we need to be aware of.
I may even have some, maybe a couple folks from Onslow and Carteret come to a work session or something here to help us fully engage with what it is. Okay. All right. I wanted to make the Commissioners aware, I did forward you an email about 5 o'clock about some potential inclement weather for tomorrow and later in the week. I am concerned about it. Certainly, anytime we have winter weather, the county operations, you know, certainly are impacted by that. We do have 24/7 operations, which we will maintain. However, some of the normal county operations, such as our transportation department, will probably be impacted. We've gone ahead today. Mr. Hodges has worked very hard with some of our clients in transportation to make sure their needs were met today and will be met early tomorrow with the anticipation that it may be sometime here we will not be able to run. As far as county operations go, we're still going to watch. There should be a report coming out later this evening, and first thing in the morning we'll monitor that, and I'll keep the board posted. What we tell folks every time, it's a good opportunity. Be careful, stay inside if you can. Driving in this type of winter weather is difficult. You may think you're good at it, but the person beside you may not be, and that sometimes can be the problem. So we'd ask you to please heed all laws and law enforcement in those times. Let's see, for you tonight, before you leave, as per the board's policy, we have compiled the annual audit report. The board several years ago asked to have that two weeks in advance of the presentation, which will happen two weeks from today. We have those for you tonight, so please see Craig before you leave. We will, of course, be available for questions that day, or questions before. We'll get it posted up on the internet, so the public has an opportunity to review it We'll get it posted up on the internet, so the public has an opportunity to review it before the presentation. And we look forward to sharing that with the board. And finally, some good news here. We have progressed nicely along with the facility need study. The board approved at the last budget process. We have, are in discussions with a vendor. We participated in a RFQ process. There were only two selections, and both of them very qualified firms. There was one that stood out that had specialties in county government operations, which we thought was very important, obviously because we're a county. However, we do have a timing issue, and I wanted to share it with the board. My concern with where we are now is that the report would come in at the same time that we're completing the annual budget. And I think that this report deserves its own light instead of being mixed in with that. It did come in a little over budget as well. We're working on that. Gene and I are going to try to move some things around, but it's gonna, if it does come in, it's going to come in probably very close to the number that you budgeted, which is $150,000. I was wondering tonight if the board had any flexibility on the timing of the report. As Gene and I have tried to put this together, it seems like the July-August would be a much better timeframe, both for the vendor, the county, and for the process in which we present it to the board. But certainly, it's your report, and we wanted to get your feelings on that tonight. We ultimately, as well, can, you know, we have the flexibility before we sign the contract to tell the firm when we want it and how we want it. So I just, I want to put that out for the board tonight for discussion.
Commissioner Tyson?
It's my opinion, I'd think July, after we get our budget approved, would give us some more time to maybe look at the study in depth more.
Right.
And as a question, is it going to include the convention center in the facility study or...?
Yes, sir. It will. We are not going to have them do a facility condition report there because we've had so much additional work done through the feasibility study of the expansion and through the work we've done on the floor settling problem. We don't want to spend a bunch of money on something we already know, basically. But yes, we will be looking at it from a space utilization and a space organization methodology.
Mr. Chairman, I have no issue moving it to July August. I think we need to study it, make sure we get a good report, and we get the time to look at it and review it because this is going to impact this county for years to come.
My biggest concern, and I think it was one that I shared last budget, is that the time that we'll be doing the most work will be the time that I'm preparing the county's annual budget. And I'm afraid I'm not, my staff and myself will not be able to do justice with the study if we're going to be, I mean, there's never a good time to do it, but that time, the way we have it set up now, seems to be problematic.
So what you're saying here is that the study itself will not begin until July-August?
No, sir. I think if we move slower versus trying to get it to you in May, May-June, that if we move slower and give us till August, that it'll allow us to space things out better versus having to meet more frequently as we're doing this. The more time we have, I think the better it'll be on staff.
I understand, but I'm asking, do you, is that still pinching things a little bit tight? Or would you prefer to see it backed off to November, December?
The longer we have, sir, it certainly would be a help to staff. But we also want to meet the board's wishes at the budget of trying to get this done. But the more time we can put into it, I think when Gene and I have sat down and we've looked at, this is going to be the 25-year growth plan for Craven County Government. This is one of the most important documents I think we're probably going to create for a while. I think it deserves the input that it's allowed. And I think if you could give us to December, certainly the product will benefit from that.
Let me just be blunt with you about this. We're obviously going into an election here. And I suspect that there will be changes to the board. I know that at least one seat, there will be a change. I didn't want to speak for you. And I guess I would like to just make certain that that next board has got as much flexibility afforded to it as possible. I think that I would have appreciated that. Commissioner Jones, you've straddled this thing in a couple of different ways. Maybe your advice here would be more important, but I don't mean to put you in an awkward situation.
Well, the only thing I would say is if you're going to save it for another board, I don't even think we need to take it up. You know, I mean, there's no need of us getting down into it and spending a lot of time and effort in it for, you know, for another board to come on and make their changes. If, you know, and I agree. I mean, I haven't a problem with that. But if you're going to do that, then you need to save it to January of 2019.
Yeah. I mean, I think you're right. I mean, certainly, that board probably would like some participation. I mean, is there's going to be, I think we all know there's going to be a big number at the end of this document. And it's going to be, whatever board's in place is time to fill it, so.
Do you want a motion?
Commissioners?
Do you need a motion?
I have guidance now to bring you that report in May. So unless you want it, I need a motion to do something other than that because that's what, the guidance I got in budget.
If the chairman were allowed a motion, I would, so I would make a motion that the study not be presented to the board commissioners until January of 2019.
I'll second that motion.
Got it. So the work itself in preparing the study could go on?
Correct. That's, that'd be great for staff.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You don't need a motion, do you?
Nope.
You just had a motion.
Okay. It's been moved seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that is all my notes. Happy New Year and see you.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners' reports. I'm going to just mix things up a little bit, going crazy here.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
I believe Commissioner McCabe did. And since he was so kind to second that motion, perhaps he'll start off this evening with his comments.
I'm going first for the first of the year, huh? I'd just like to say, I hope everyone have a nice, wonderful New Year and God bless all of us. And also like to say that as the New Year's coming here, my resolution is to try to improve everyone, it is your attitudes, your personality, your love, because that's what God wants. And that's what we all need. And try to have more patience with one another and try to work together. As well as work together, the county and the city need to work together more than what we're doing now for the people in this county and the city. And we all need some love to change our heart. Of course, some people have had to pay for, for love to be rich. Because a lot of people don't like to give love away. But if you believe in God, try to do that and become a better person in 2018 for all of us and for yourself. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson?
Mr. Chairman, since you're on talking about new boards coming on, I did want to announce to everybody that didn't know already that I was not going to seek reelection next year and that I have enjoyed serving with this board and all the employees of Craven County. We've got some really top-notch department head employees here. And I'm hoping that someone that takes my place will be a business-minded type person. With that, I'm a businessman, as you know, but government is not like business, but it is like business. It's not like business because there's a lot of things that government is charged with doing that business certainly doesn't want to do or can't do. However, it is like business in the sense that there is a budget that has to be set, it's mandated by the state, it has to be balanced. And there's two equations, basically, three in a business balance sheet, but technically, I guess it's the same with a government balance sheet. You have revenue and expenses. And we all know what the revenues are in government, and that's taxes. A board, government can give you all the things that you want, but it comes with a price. And I think that businessman takes my place on the board. Hopefully, they better make good, wise decisions because they've been spending their money and hopefully they'll spend the taxpayers' money just like that with their own. I hope everybody has a wonderful 2018. I think it's going to be the best year for Craven County and all the municipalities in this county that we've seen probably since 2005 or '06. I'm saying that because I make my money selling real estate and I see some good positive things happening in that industry. And I see good, positive things happening in other industries as well. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
I'd just like to say that I believe in helping all those people that send need, especially our seniors. And as I see our care for our seniors dreadfully, and our seniors, a lot of our seniors not getting the proper care that they need. Our businesses, across their homes. I have an aunt and I have a sister at home. And when I go there, I can see sometimes they don't have enough help to get around to the people that they have in the homes. And some of, some of the people, family don't come see them at least sometime in a year and then it goes on to four or five years. And I really feel for these peoples. I can go in there and see like sometimes it's after dinner before the people even be waited on to get changed before they even eat. And it's critical in some of these homes. I know, I know we had one that closed down and do new work to the home. I heard said we're going to be opening up for this all. But I know some homes that really need to be monitored even more. I feel like our senior citizens has paid their dues and that they have to go to a home. We have some young people in homes too, but not as many have senior citizens. So I just keep right on letting the government know that senior citizens really need to be looked after and taken care of. I know for a fact, a lot of the children, when they get grown and after finishing college, they get them a good job and they move, they move away from their parents. And sometimes, some of them don't get back in three or four years and maybe don't time to get back in the funeral, see what's left. So it's a bad omen. I just hope that the kids will take a new look. I know I have kids. I have five boys and four girls. All of them, the girls, because the girls are real good and the boys, they do their share, but they can't outwork the girls. Because girls love their parents and I love my parents. And now, the Lord fix it so I got children that really looks after our interest, my wife and my interests. Because they feel like we did a good job on them, even though some of them don't live in New Brunswick, lives away. But they still stay in contact with their father and mother. And they abide by a lot of our wishes. A lot of young people, they get so they think, the old people, they ain't got no sense no more. But they forgot where we came from, how we brought them up. But I can say that my kids are not like that. And I hope there are more kids, more concerned about the parents because they leave it up to the people at the homes. And no one going to take care of your parents like a good daughter or a good son would. And I'm just asking the public that we will go by, even if you don't have anyone in the home. We have some churches that go to the home sometimes. There's not many though, but there's some. And it's a good start. And we need to be concerned, very concerned about how our senior citizens are spending their last days. And another thing I'd like to talk about is, people, we need to help all people that really have problems. We got people that can't find jobs, people can't find a place to stay, had to live outside. And I find people that got drug problems, opioid problems, which will take you out in a little while. And we need to be concerned about all these people. And I've been talking to this board and I talked to some of the members of the city board, that the city and the county could come together and bitch out and try to build a place that we could put at least 25 people that was on the streets. Just a lot of people, if you were getting out and walking the streets in bad weather, or you know, that's riding the streets in bad weather, you see people walking up and down the street, pouring out raining. And we had some of the coldest nights I've seen just about my lifetime, stay cold this long. Pikes still, some people's pikes, my hot water pipes are still frozen. And I know a lot of people, pipes is frozen. When your pipe frozen, you don't get no water unless you, sometimes your cold water's down, but your hot water stay off longer, stay around the 20s and the 16s. Sometimes it goes down to nine and eight and all like that. It's been a long time since we had any weather like that. Three and four degrees, you stay in the weather too long, you get frostbitten. So let's think about a person staying outside all night long, trying to sleep in a car under the bridge. That jack frost or bite, if you stay out there long enough, you'll find out of the bite. And I hope that we could come together and even if it's 25 or 30 rooms that we permit, that'd be 25, 30 people off the street. And it could be done. We spend money for other things. And we don't need to leave it up to the public all the time. We need to take the first action to look like the public. And we got a little, we got about, I read about 10 or 15 in Rome right there in the soup kitchen. And they stay full when it's hot. You know what's happening when it's cold. So I'm just hoping that we think about this, think about it real hard and think about your family out there in the weather now, either you or out there in the weather. And it makes a difference when you have to walk the street when you don't have anywhere to go. You can just imagine your lights go off and you don't have no lights in the house, but you gotta think about the heat going on and what, how will you feel? So I just hope we could come together and start talking about getting a place for people to stay in these critical times and in this bad weather that we're having now. Bad enough last year, but it's going to be worse, already been worse this year. So I'm just hoping that we can come together and talk about these things and get something done. Now, I was, I was at Florida on a vacation just last past holidays and I was up in Riverview and Tampa and Olanda. And the sons and daughters, they just, I like, we were children. They wanted to do everything for. And I just hope we had more children that would do that. And boys, the boys and girls, you know, a lot of times, we got boys, you know, they don't think a whole lot of it like the girls do. But my boy right there, my boy came pick me up in Raleigh. He was out, he got, he had to get up by 8 o'clock, you know, Monday morning. It was down in the teens, low teens. And he came up there to pick me up. And I came in on an airplane. And my daughters, sons, and all of them were so good to me over the holidays. I was just, I was just about to cry how well they treated me. And I see so many kids don't, don't come see their parents in years. And I just feel like these peoples are being cheated when my family's treating me so well. And they wouldn't let my wife and I spend nothing, two weeks. We didn't want to stay there. We were trying to get out, staying up there that long. And they told us, we got, we have five children, we have four children in this area, one there. And we have, had five children in this area. In fact, had two, two girls and one boy up there. They said they was all the children too. We should spend some time with them, don't spend all the time with the rest of them. I just love New Brunswick. And I, I don't want to stay I just love New Brunswick, and I didn't, I didn't want to stay away from New Brunswick too long, but they convinced me, they were so convincing, and they would, they would let us spend nothing unless we just wanted to spend something. They would say, what you want, this and that, and bought, bought me all kind of clothes and get up and fix breakfast and dinner and take us out to eat. And I'm just proud that they're children like that, because it make you feel good when you see your investment pay off, and that my investment paid off. And I know that all of them love me. I got one, the baby, he's, he's coming around, he's in California, but he hasn't reached his maturity yet. But I'm just thankful, and I give all credit I can to them for being children that really cares about the parents and love the parents like the parents love them. See, now, another thing, when I was up there, gas prices didn't go up while I was up there, but after I got ready to leave, it started going up. All of, for years, gas prices was cheaper than ours, and then while I left, I saw the gas prices inching up. And I got here, gas price was inching up. So I'm just hoping that we will stay on these gas prices, because people can hardly pay fuel bill now. I think about electric bills, and I don't know telling how electric bill going to look, and the water bill going to look, the only half busted pipe because the old plumbers, they got to charge your arm and leg to get on there, special crawl on the house, and they'll charge outside from going on the house. So we just keep praying to the Lord and that he would soften the hearts of these dealers and look out for the people who really can't afford it. And I've been listening at the radio, and it was talking about minimum wages, how minimum wage has stayed the same, but everything else is going up. I feel for people out there on the minimum wage. Some, some people, seven seventy-five an hour, that's, that's kind of tough to try to live off seven seventy-five an hour. So I'm just hoping that we will continue volunteering and helping people that's in need, have carpenters and bricklayers and others, helping the people who's in need, and then the stomp come and people thinking they're set for life and losing everything to God. That's, that's a hurtful feeling. But we got to keep right on loving peoples and helping peoples that need help and showing our love. People's on drugs, we say, we say it's good enough for them, but when our children get in the same condition, we want somebody to help them, so we need to help everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lerner?
Sir, mine's short and sweet. I'd like to see everybody try to stay warm for the next couple of days, but most importantly, stay safe. If you have to be out on the road, please be watchful of what you've got out there. It's not you, like I was said earlier, it's the other people. If you don't have to be out, please don't be out. Let's have everybody return back safely. That's all I have.
Commissioner Jones?
I got a seven o'clock flight in the morning, so I'm going. I got to go hunt and pack.
Given that statement, I will then close out the meeting. I want to thank everybody and welcome everybody to a wonderful New Year.
Mr. Chairman, could you recognize one of former?
Oh, by all means.
A former Alman, Bernard White, he's a lovely white.
Thank you very much, Alman. Thank you very much. Okay, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, thank you very much.